Hello. What's up John? Hopefully everything's going good with you. Yeah, what are you studying right now? What's your studies going about? Yeah, I'm I imagine you just moved into a new house if that's correct. Oh yeah, I can definitely imagine. Perfect. Well, I I hope you uh get to come in. I know we've been missing you. And hopefully we can get on with the new project that we have. Understandable. So. Uh for John that's commenting um my name's Rob. This is the channel Path of the Raven. It's my duty obligation and uh mission to get you guys and read the sagas all together, read them um and analyze them and on top of that be able to go and I don't know, do some do some other things. That's that's the idea. That's the idea. Uh but to take a little one. Well, alright, so John just brought up a really good point um. The mission of today's is reading the Havamal and then we're gonna go into a little deep dive into it and um. Uh yeah, we got more, we got the highlight of the last week's study session on the YouTube channel. Um we're live streaming to Path of the Raven YouTube channel, Path of the Raven Twitch channel, my personal Facebook account and then um my uh the new Uppsala Facebook account. The goal is to eventually get together, get this a big joint um. You know, grow the grow it and get it bigger and my goal is to not just do Sunday study sessions. I mean, I've been pretty hammered this whole week, so that's been an issue, but the goal is to go live every day and either just game um just chat with uh you guys, answer any questions, be available to each and every one of you. This is a Sunday study session and we're gonna get right to it with the Havamal. We're gonna be reading about it and then go in and analyze. Maybe even share a couple of my personal favorite stanzas of the Havamal and I hope you all enjoy. Like, comment, subscribe, what you want. And don't forget to hit the bell notification so you know when I go live. I am working on a schedule, so be very typical. Um got a lot of things up in the air at the moment. Um I'm looking about two hours every day to be available to you guys via video. And yeah, so let's get into the Havamal again, just like last week for the study session, we'll be reading the Poetica, the Lee Hollander version. Um I have the Poetica by Jack Crawford um here right next to me, so if you have a question and use that book as a resource, I can uh quickly go over to that and look it over there. So um little bit about Norse paganism, we're a polytheistic religion. Um we believe in the Norse gods as you can see from the wallpaper I have, uh it's very folk-based as in community-based, not folkish as in like whites only. Folk as in community. Alright, this is a community-based religion and you just wanna be there for your people, you wanna be there for your family and so on, so on. So. Alrighty, we're gonna get right into it. Hopefully this is good. It's been eight minutes. Alright. So if you don't know anything about the Havamal, which if you just getting into Norse paganism, it's very um it's our closest representation of the words. It's our closest version of guidance from Odin himself. Um so the Havamal is translated to the sayings of R, which the sayings of Odin. Alright, we're gonna start with stanza one and continue on. I got chat right there, so you guys can write questions and I'll be ready and available to answer. Alright, let's get this party started. Have the eyes about thee when thou enterest. Beware y- all way. Be watchful all way, for one never knoweth when need will be to meet Hildin, a foe in the hall. All hail to the givers, all guest hath come. Say where shall he sit? In haste is he to the hall who cometh to find a place by the fire, though warmeth seeketh. Who hath wandered long and is numb about his knees, meat and dry clothes the man needeth over the fells who hath fared. A drink needeth to full dishes who cometh. A towel and the prayer to partake, good bearing eke to be well-liked and be bidden to banquet again. On his wit hath need, who winely fareth, a dull wit who do at home. A laughing stock he, who lacketh words among smart wits when he sits. To be bright of brain, no let no man boast, but take good heed of his tongue. The sage and silent come seldom to grief. As they fare among folk in the hall, more faithful friend findest thou never than shrewd head on thy shoulders. The wary guest to wazil who comes listens that he may learn. Open his ears, cast his eyes about, thus wards him the wise man against harm. Happy is he who hath won him, the love and liking of all. How hard is it one's help to seek from the mind of another man? Helpy is he who hath won him, both winning ways and wisdom, for ill-led is ooft. Who asketh help from the wit and the words of another. Better burden fairest thou now wise, than shrewd ahead on thy shoulders, and good stead will it stand. Among stranger folk and shield, when unsheltered, thou art better burden. Fairest thou now wise, than shrewd head on thy shoulders, but with the worser food fairest thou never than an overmuch of mead. For good is not, thou good is it thought, mead for the sons of men, and deeper he drinks. The drimmer grows, the dimmer grows, the mind of many men. The heron of hatelessness hoovers over the feast and stilleth the minds of men. When the fowl's feather fettered I was, when I was gunlud's guest. Drunk I became, that drunk forsooth, when I was with wise fialer. The bout is best, from which back fetters fetches each man his mindful care, full clear. Let a king's offspring be sparing in words and bold in battle. Glad and hopesome the hero be, till come his dying day, then wise man thinks that he eh will live, if from fighting he flees, but the ails and aches of old age dog him. Though spears have spared him, the fool but gapes, when he when to folks he comes, he mumbles and mopes. Soon is seen, when his thrill he had, what the mind of a man is like, only he is aware to hath wandered much and far hath been afield. What manner of men be you whom he meets, if himself be not wanting in wit, the cup spurn not. Yet be sparing withal, say what is needful or not, for ill-breeding upbraids thee no man. If soon thou goest to sleep, the greedy guest gainsays his head and eats until he is ill. His belly oft makeeth a butt of a man, on bench midest the sage when he sits. The herd do know when home they shall, and gink from the grass to their stalls. But the unwise man will not ever learn how much his maw will hold. The ill-minded man who meanly thinks, flares at both foul and fair. He does not know, as know he ought, that he is not free from flaws. The unwise man waketh all night, thinking of this and that. Tosses and sleepless and is tired at morn, nor like lighter, for that is load, the unwise man weens that all who laughs with him like him too. Nor seers their sees their scorn, though they sneer at him. On bench midest the sage when he sits, the unwise man weens that all that laugh with them like him too. But when he finds when to the thing he comes, give smokesmen to speak speed his cause. The unwise man weens, he knows all. If from harm he is far at home, but knows not ever what answer to make when others ask him ought. The unwise man, among others who comes, let him be sparing to speech, for no one knows that not is in him, but he opens his mouth too much. Clear is he who is keen to ask and eke to answer all men. Tis hard to hide from the hearing of men, what is on everyone's lips much at random. After rainbows, he whose tongue does ever rattle, a talker's tongue unless tame it be will often work him wo, no make tha- make thou of any man. Though thou comest among kinsmen, he knows, knowing weens him whom no one has asked, and dry should hice him home, a wise man he. Who hies and be times from the men who likes to mock. For a table he teases can never tell what foe he might have to make fight. Many a man means no ill, yet teases the others at table. Strife will ever start among men when guest clashes with guest. An early meal a a man should get him, let famished he come to the feast. He sits and stuffs as though starved we were, and not, he says to his neighbors. To false friend a a far wit tis. Though his roof be reared by the road, to staunch friend a a straightway leads, though far he have fared from thee. Get thee gone bedtimes. Get thee gone be times, a guest should not stay too long in one steed. Instead. Leaf grows loaf if too long one sits. On bench though in he was bidden, one's home is best. Thou a hut it be, there a man is master and lord. Though bo bleh. Though but two goats thine, and thatched roof, tis far better than beg. One's home is best. Though a hut it be there, a man is master and lord. His heart doth bleed, who has to beg the meat for his every meal. From his weapons away, no one should ever stir one step on the field. For no one knows when need might have on a sudden a man of a sword. So freehand never found I a man, but would gladly take what is given. Nor of his good so grudgingly ever to forego what is given him of his worldly goods, which is gotten hath, not a man, not stink it stink stint over much. Off dislavished on foe, what for friend was saved, for matters go often amiss. How worried was? So freehand never found I a man, but would gladly take what is given. Nor of his good so ungrudgingly ever to forego what is given him of his gladly goods. Which he gotten hath, let a man not stint over much. Off dislavished on foe, what for friend was saved, nor matters go oft amiss. With weapons and weeds should friends be won as soon with weapons and weeds should friends be won as one can see in themselves. Those give to each other will a be friends once they meet halfway. When his friend a man should be friends ever and pay back, gift for gift, laughter for laughter, he learned to give and eke lessons for lies. With his friend a man should be friends ever, with him and the friend of his friend but a foeman's friend. Befriend thou never and keep thou aloof from his kin. If friend thou hast, whom faithful thou deemest, and wishest to win him from thee. Hope thy heart to him, nor withhold thy gifts, and fare to find him often. If another there be whom I whom thou thou truest trustest. Yet wouldest get from him gain, speak fair to him, thou vows thou meanest and pay him blessings for lies, and eke his heads if ill thou trust one. And hallow-hearted his speech, thou shalt laugh with him and lure him on and let him have tit or tat. Young was I once and went alone, and wandering I lost my way. When a friend I found, I felt me rich. Man is cheered by man. He who giveth gladly a goodly laugh leadeth. And seldom hath thee sorrow. Yeah, I need to fix that. He who giveth gladly a goodly laugh leadeth, and seldom hath thee sorrow, but the turlish white is cherry of all, and grutingly part of his gifts. In the fields as I fared for fun I hung my weeds on two wooden men. They were reckoned folk. Reckoned re- reckoned folks, when the rags they wore, naked a man is not. The fir tree dies, and the field that stands shields it nor bark nor bast. Just making sure everything's good. And fire a haunter for five days burneth, love between friends that are false. And dieth down when dawneth the six, and all the sweetness turns sour. Not great things needs, give it give to a man, bringeth thanks oft a little things, with half a loaf and half drained cup. I won me oft worthy friend, a little lake hath but little sand. But small the mind of man, that all men are equally wise, each white wanteth somewhat. middling wise every man should be, beware of being too wise, happiest in life. Most likely he who knows not more than is needful. middling wise every man should be, beware of being too wise for wise man hearts. Is happily seldom, if too great the wisdom he won. middling wise every man should be, beware being too wise, his fate let no one beforehand know who would keep his heart from care. Kindlings brand from brand and burns all till all burnt it is. Thus fire is kindled from fire, by the words of his mouth a man is known, but from his dumbness a dullard, bedtimes must arise, who must who would take another's life and win his wealth. Lying down wolf never got the lamb, nor sleeping white slew his foo foe. Bedtimes must rise, who few reapers has, and see to the work himself. Much will miss if the mourn who sleeps, for the brisk the race is half-run. What laughs and logs will last him out, a man may reckon all a right. And of wooden to warm him, how much he may want, for many a winter month while groomed and washed, wind to the thing, though thou clothes be not the best of thou shoes and breeks be not ashamed, and still less of thy steed with lowered head sweeps, to the sea when he comes, to the eagle or the billing brine. Thus eke man among a throg, who finds but a few to befriend him. Both ask and answer, let everyone who wishes to be deemed wise. Let one know it, nor none other. If three known thousands will, a wise man will not overweening be, and stake too much on his strength. When the mightier met to match their strength, till be found the first is no one. When the mightier met to match their strength, till be found the first is no one. Everything should be right. Watchful and wary everyone should be, nor put too much trust in a friend. The words be won unwarily spoken have done oft a bounty man. Too late by far, to some feasts I come, to others all too soon. The beer was drunk or yet unbrewed. Never hits it the hapless one right. Here or there would they have me in, if no meat at the meal I craved. Were hung two hams. In my good friend's home after eating one of his own. A bony fire is a blessing to man and eke the sight of the sun his hearty health. If he holds it well and to live one's life without shame, all undone is no one. Though at death's door he lie. Some with good sons are blessed and some with kinsmen. Nor or with coffers full. And some with deeds well done. Better alive than lifeless be, to the quick fall ale the cattle. The hearth fire burned for the happy hare, outdoors a dead man lay. May the holt ride a horse and the handle- handle- handleless he herdsman. The deaf man may doughtably fight, a plan- blind man is better. Than a buried one, a. Of what gain is a good man dead? To have a son is good, late God thou he be. And born he buried his father, father, stones see, seeest thou seldom. Set by the roadside, but by kith raised over kinsmen. Two well down one, of tongue is head's bane, a fist I fear kneeeth. Every furry coat, of the night is vain, whose knapsack is full. Close our ship's quarters, fickle are the nights in fall. There's both fair and foul in five days' time, still more so within a month. He who knoweth nothing knoweth not, neither how wealth. May warp a man's wit, one hath wealth, one wanted another. Though he bears no blame himself, cattle die, kinsmen die. Thyself ex soon will die, but fair fame will fade never, I wean for him who wins it. Cattle die and kinsmen die, thyself ex soon will die. One thing I wot, will wither never the doom over each one dead. A full stocked harm farm had some farmer's sons. Now they stood at the beggar's staff in a tweaking lath. Worthless wealth, it is the ficklest of friends. The unwise man, once he calls all, calls his own. Wealth or the love of a woman, his overweening guaxes. But his wit never, he oddly hardens his heart. Tis readily found when the runes thou ask, made by mighty gods. Known to holy hosts and dyed deep red my oden. That tis wise to waste no words, at I eve praise the. At eve praise the day when burned down a torch, a wife when wedded. A weapon when tried, ice win over it, ale when it's tis drunk. Fell wood in the wind and fair weather row out to sea. Dally with girls in the dark, the day's eyes are many. Choose a shield for shelter, a ship for speed, a sword for keenness, a girl for kissing. By the fire drunk ale, skate on the ice, buy a bony steed a rusty blade. Feed your horse at home and your hound in his hutch. He wrenches words let no wise man trust, nor trust the truth of a woman. Or one or on whirling wheel. Their hearts are shaped and fickle and fightful their minds. A brittle bow, a burning fire, a gaping wolf, a grunting sow. A cracking crow, a kettleing boiling, a rising sea, a rootless tree. A flighting flying dart, foaming billow. Ice one night old, it coiled up a adder. A woman's bed talk, a broken blade, the play of clubs, a king's psychin. A stickly calf, a self-willed thrall, the smooth words of a witch, warriors fresh slain. Hope you're all enjoying this. Our brothers bainsmen, thou it be on the road, they have burned house, speedy horse. Worthless thy steed, if one foot he breaks, so trusting be no one so. To trust in these. Early s- sown acres, let no. Early sown acres. Let none ever trust nor. Trust his sons too soon, on does weather the one, on wisdom the other. Risk not thy riches on these. The false love of a woman, tis like no one. Oh my gosh, I can't speak. The false love of woman, tis like to one riding on ice with horse. Unrough should a brisk two-year-old. Unbroken withal or enraging wind, drifting rudderless like the lame out running. The reindeer on bare rock. Read my words now, for I know them both, mainsworn are men to love. Read my words now, nor I know them both. Mainsworn are meant to follow, we speak most fair when most false are thoughts. For the wiles and rarest wits fairly shall speak, nor spare his gifts. Who will win a woman's love, shall praise the looks of the lovely maid. He who flatters will win the fair, at the loves of a man to laugh is not met. For anyone ever. The why, why is enough to fall, when fools yield not to the lure of a lovely maid? Tis not meant for men to mock at what befalls many men. Oh my gosh. Tis not met, tis not meet for men to mock at what befalls. For many, a fair face oft makes fools of the wise, by the mighty lure of love. One's self only knows what is near one's heart, each reads but himself all right. A right. No sickness seems to sound mind worse than to have lost all liking for life. Then saw I well, that saw I well. When I sat in the reeds awaiting the maid I wooed more than bodily and soul. Was the sweet maid to me, yet I worked not will, not my will with her. Billings daughter, on her bed I found, sleeping the sun-bright maid. A king's crown I craved not to wear if she let me have her love. At eve, at eve tide, at even tide. Shalt Odin come if thou wilt. Win me to wife, unmeet it were, if more than we two know of this naughty thing. Back I went to win her love, I let myself be misled. Or I did think enthralled by love to work will with her. When next I came at night time then, all the warriors found I awake. With brands high-born and burning lights, such the luckless end of my love trust. Near morwen I, once more did come, the folks were sound asleep. But a bitch found I, the fair one had, found fast on her bed. Many a good maid, if you mark it well, is, oh my gosh, my eye. Many a good maid, if you mark it well, is fickle though fair her word. Then I quickly found, when the cunning maid I learned to le- lecherous love. Every taunt and gib she tried on me and thought I had on her. My eye is still bugging me, oh my goodness, I just need to read. Glad in his home, to his geist cheerful yet shrewd. Should one be wise and weighty, be the word of his mouth. If wise he would be thought, in ninni is he who not can say. For such is the way of the witless, the old atan I sought. Now am I back in the good steeds stood. Me, my speech, for with many words my wish I brought. In the hall of sitting songs. With an augur I there ate my way through the rocks I made my room. Over and under were the etens paths, thus dared I live. Thus dared I life and limbs, gonlot gave me her good gold stool upon. A drop of the deer bought me in. And ill reward I her after I left. For her faithful friendship, for her heavy heart. Of the well-bought matter I made good use, to the wise now little is lacking. For othrith near, now up is brought and one for the lord of all whites. Unharmed again, had I hardly come out of the etens hall, if gonlot helped me. If gonlot helped me, the good maiden in whose loving arms I lay. The day after the etens fared into hor's high fall. And oh, the day after the etens fared into hor's high hall. To ask about bulverk, whether the azir among or whether I sutong slain. In oath on the ring did Odin swear. Oh, put trust in his troth, suckting he swindled. He snatched his strength and gonlot be hu- be gilded. Tis time to chant on the sage's chair, at the well of earth. I saw but said not, I saw and thought, listened to hare's lore. Of runes I heard men speak unraveling them. The hall of horror, in the hall of horror, and so I heard them say. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend the strength. Follow it twill further thee, a knight rise not, but to be ready for foe. Or to look for spot to relieve thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. And a witch's arms, beware of sleeping, leaking thy limbs with hers. She will cast her spell, that thou carest not to go to meetings. Oh my gosh, I really have to stop yawning, I don't know why I'm so tired. She will cast her spell, that thou carest not to go to meetings where men are gathered. Und mindful of meat, the mirthless thou goest and seekest thy bed in sorrow. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it. Oh my gosh, my eyes, I need to take a break. Alrighty. So. We're on stanza. One fifteen of the hallamall and out of the hallamall there is. Hundred and. Sixty-five, so good portion of the way done, the goal is to be um. I'll thank. Papa. The goal of it is, is to be a. Nice little reading that you can just listen to, that's all. And that's why there's not much enthusiasm. When does my freaking free welcome kit arrive? Not sure what you're referring to at that time. But the goal, to just read this and spread the poetic era. And after this I'll go through four to five. Stances that were really important and why they need to be emphasized. And why people need to, if they follow this path, if they, they need to know these five stances. Uh, welcome get to everything Norse, okay, um. Nosh, so everything, if you wanted to know more about Norse pantheon. I will be more than happy to help you, have my direct number. I will be more than happy to help you, have my direct number, um. But if you're asking so other people know as well, um, there's. As right now, Sundays are gonna be Sunday study sessions. Um, and I'll be reading all through the poetic era. I'm gonna try and then go through the prose era, which is from the direct source. And historically, the best way we know about uh. The Nordic gods. So yeah, that, um, but if you wanted a quick little couple. Um, if you got any other questions, um, a lot of YouTubers out there, a lot of. Facebook pages and all that jazz, but you know, you got a direct source, so might as well just come directly to the source. I've been studying this for many years, and it's been a passion, so. I'm doing what I can. Stanza one fifteen, here there. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength. Follow it twill further thee, beware lest unwedded, wife of a man. Thou lurd to love with thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength. Follow it twill further thee, on fell or firth, if to fare thee latest. Furnished thee well with food. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it. Twill further thee, uphold the hardships which happened to thee. After the knowledge of narves, for now thou from knaves. Thou wilt never leave, oh, thou wilt never have reward for thy good wishes. A man I saw sorely be stead, through a wicked woman's words. Her baleful tongue did work his bane, though good and unguiltly he was. Hear Lord. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. It faithful friend thou hast found for thee, then fare thou to find him. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. If faithful friend thou hast found for thee, then fare thou to find him full oft. Overgrown is soon with tall grass and bush, the trail which is trod by no one. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill. Further thee, a good man seek thou to gain as thy friend and learn to make thyself loved. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well. Learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee, the first be not with a friend to break. One who has faithful found to thee. For solo eateth the soul of him who may not unburden his mind. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Beware thou oft of binding word, banding, banding words? With an unwise oaf. From evil man, not ever wilt all, get reward for good, a good man though will gain for thee. The love and liking of many. Then love is ming- mingled when a man can say to a bosom friend that burdens him. Few things are worse than fickle fine, uh, than fickle mind. No friend he who but speaks the fair. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. Not three words shout with a worst man bandy. Often better man forbears when the worse man wounds thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. Whether shoemaker be nor sho- sho- shaftmaker either. But it be for thyself, ne- let the shoe be ill-shaped or the shaft not true. And let, oh, and they will wish thee woo, a woe. And they will wish thee woe. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. If wrong was done thee, let the wrong be known. And fall on those, on thy foes straightway. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to the further thee. And ill deeds not ever share, but be thou good to do good. Appreciate all the support. I'm more than appreciate just being able to share this. To everyone, so, yeah. What? Think next. We're on stanza. One twenty-nine, I wanna say, one stanza one twenty-nine of the Hallamall. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength. Follow it to further thee, took not ever up when fighting. Or mad they with fear, men then oft grow, lest the warlogs bewitch thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. If the list to gain a wo- good woman's love and all the bliss there be. Though troth shalt pledge and truly keep, no one's. No one tires of the good he gets. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength and follow it. Till further thee, be wary of thee, but not wary or much. Be most wary of ale. And of other man's wives, and eke thirdly, let thieves out with thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. Never laugh at or mock or make game of guest or wearing. Fight, fight. Guest or wearing fine, way ferring, alright. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. Never laugh at or mo- oh my gosh, never laugh at or mo-. Never laugh at or mock, or make game of guest or way bearing white. Perfect, it only took me six times. Those who sit within hall oft hardly know of what kin be they who come. No man is flawless, but some. Fault he is, nor so wicked to be of no worth. Both foul and fair are found among men blended within their breasts. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, learn it to further thee. At hoary stage, sneer thou never. There his sense often old man saws, oft wisdom cometh out of withered bag. That hangs amongst the hides, oh my gosh, that hangs. Amongst the hides and dangles amongst the skins drying under a roof with the rennet. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. Be true, not the stranger, nor show him the door, but rather do good to the wretched. That bar must be strong, which unbearers the doors, to each and every one, show the beggar your back. Lest bearing the grudge, ye wish you all manner of mischief. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it to further thee. When ale drunkest invoke earth's strength, for earth is good against ale. Against argue fire, and straining of corns, giant, giantist, giant. Ganest, gainst, gainst which restial, gainst. How strife the elder, gainst height, the moon. Against the rabies alum, against ill luck, runes. For earth absorbs the humors all. I wolt that I hung on the wind-tossed tree. All of knights nine wounded by spear bespoken to Odin, bespoken. Myself to myself upon that tree of which none telleth from what roots it doth arise. Neither horn they upheld nor handed me bread, I looked below me aloud, I. Aloud I cried, caught up the runes and caught them wailing. Thence to the ground fell again, from the sons of Bowthorn. Bestella's father I mastered mighty songs nine, and a drink I had of the dearest mead. Got from the out of Orthrothneer. All three near. O T H R A E R I R, that's how you spell it, don't know how to pronounce it. Then began I grow and gain in insight to wax eke and wisdom. One verse led on to another verse, one poem led on to another poem. Runes wilt thou find and rightly read of wondrous weight of matchy. Mighty magic which the dyed and dread god. Which they ha- made the holy host and were etched by Odin. Odin among Azir for elf stain, the Valins for the dwarfs, Elvish among Etons. But for the earth-born men. Rot I s- um, rot I some myself. Knowest how to write, knowest how to read, knows how to strain, how to understand. Knows how to ask, knows how to offer, knows how to supplicate, knows how to sacrifice. Tis better unasked than offered over much, for ale doth a gift look for gain. Tis better unasked than offered over much, thus did Odin's right. Ur the earth a, uh, ur, ur, the earth began. Went up he rose, and after time. Those spells I know with the spouses of kings, what not nor early white. Help one is white, I'll help one is height, with which open. Thou be in sorrow and care with sickness. That other I know which all will need who leeches list to be. On the bark scratcheth them a bull in the woods, whose bull bend to the east. That third I know, if my need be great to fetter a foeman fail. A can dull, I can dull the swords of deadly foes. That nor wiles nor weapons avail. That fourth I know if foemen have fettered me hand and foot, I chant a charm the chains to break. So the fetters will fly off my feet and off my hands the halter. The fifth I know if from foeman's hand. I see a spear sped into throng, never so fast it flies. But its flight I can say, oh. The fifth I know if from foeman's hand I see a spear sped into throng, never so fast it flies, but. But its flights I can stay, once my eye light out. Alright, need it. Ron, stanza one fifty of the Hallamall. That fifth I know if from foeman's hand I see a spear sped into throng, never so fast it flies. But its flight I can stay, once my eye lights on it, finally finish that stanza. The sixth I know if me someone wounds with runes on gnarled root written. Or rouses my wraith, be reckless speech, and polite shall blast not me. That seventh I know if o'er sleeper's head I behold a hall on fire. However bright the blaze, I can beat it down, that mighty spell I can speak. That eighth I know which all to men is needful and good to know. When hatred runs high and hurrs among their strife, I can settle full soon. The ninth I know if need there be to guard a ship in a gale. The wind I calm and the waves also, the holy sootheth the sea. The tenth I know if heights hag sporting, I scan oft in the sky, I scare among with thems. Well, I scare with spells. If they scattered abroad, heedless of their hides, heedless of their haunts. The eleventh I know. If I am to lead, old friends to the fray under buck. Buckler I chant and briskly they fare, hail and hold to battle, hail and hold from battle. Hail whenever they are. The twelfth I know if on tree I see a hanged one hoisted on high. Thus I write and runes I stain, that down the drops and tells me his tales. That thirteenth I know if a thail suns I shall, wet with holy water, never will he fall. Though they, though the fray be hot, nor sink down wounded by a sword. The fourteenth I know it to folk I shall sing and say for the gods, Azir and elves. No I altogether, of unlearned few have I, have that lore, oh my gosh. Azir and elves, no I altogether of unlearned few have that allure. That no I fifteenth, which. That no I fifteenth, which. Thoroth near sang, the dwarf before Delling's door gave to Azir strength to Alf's victory. By his songs and insight to Odin. That sixteenth I know if I seek me some maid to worry my will with her. A white-armed woman's heart I bewitched and toward me I burn her thoughts. That seventeenth I know if the slender man's love I have and hold her to me, thus I sing to her. That she hardly will leave me for other man's love. In those lore wilt thou, Lord Fafnir, be unversed forever in a thy will worded. If the wisdom's thine, tis helpful if heeded, tis helpful if known. The eighteenth I know which to none I will tell, neither maid nor man's wife. Tis best worded if by one know it. To speak it I last of my spells, but only to her if whose arms I lie. Or else to my sister also. Now our saying's hair spoken in horse hall to help to the sons of men. Of harm to the sons of etens, hail to ever speak them. Oh hail to ever spoke them, hail to ever knows them, gain they who grasp them happy. They who heed them. And that is the sayings of the hor, which is the Havamol. Apologies, that, that was pretty dry, but. Wanted to give the benefit of the doubt and the greatest respect. Because the Havamol should not be taken lightly, um, so. Yes, with that being said. We are going to transition into a. We're gonna deep dive into the Havamol, I'm gonna give you five stanzas, big ol' five. Five stanzas that are going to help you better understand the Havamol and better understand what. This truly means. So if you. This ready. So the Havamol, we are gonna go with. Stanza. Let's get the English version, bring a different version into the mix, get that one ready as well. Sorry, I'm looking at something. We're gonna start with. Havamol stanza twenty seven. So here it says like on this picture, it says wherever you know of harm. Guard that harm as your own and give your foes no peace, but if you're coming directly from the hollow and what you read directly just read. Uh, for the poetic edda by Jackson Crawford, it says, I counsel you, Lord Fafnir, if you'll take my advice. You'll profit if you learn it, it will do you good if you remember it. When you're at war, call it war and give your enemies no peace. So once, one twenty seven. I mean, talking about that, it's very. A lot of people say it for declaration one twenty seven, which is the, the fight. To go against uh, the Havamol or not, but not go against the Havamol to. Uh, declaration one twenty sevens to go against the AFA, which is a. As the true folk assembly, which is a white supremacy group, so there's that, but anyways. Uh, for me, one twenty seven is just not for, you know, white supremacy or anything, but it's purely for everyone. That goes and. Even if your foe is yourself and is your mental state, don't give your foe no peace. You're constantly in a battle to make yourself better, to make yourself more equated. To make yourself. More at peace by being, by giving no peace. That's why I love stanza one twenty seven, literally one of my favorite stanzas. Um, I'm gonna have it on bids of cards and it's gonna say when you are at war, call it war. And give your enemies no peace. And then, um. Yeah, let's say it's fifty, so that's, that's my first stanza that I love. And feel you should know it, and you should uh, be happier and. With that knowledge, make a better adjustment to. Give yourself a better life, to better. You, the people around you and even if you have it as like motivation. You can use that even at places of work, if coworkers are. Being a total butt, give them no peace. So, there you go. Uh, I'm gonna go back to Hollander version, I wanna see it's. So, uh, stands of fifty four through fifty six, talking about middlewise. So middlewise is a concept that Odin gives us about being. In the middle, not being too dumb, not being too smart. Odin is at the stage of being too smart, cuz he knows what's gonna happen, I mean. We just went over the bolesva last week, so there's that, but anyways. When he's talking about being middlewise. You, if you're too dumb, people are gonna take advantage of you, if you're too smart, you're gonna drag yourself into chaos. Now, if you're middlewise, you're neither nor nor there, you're just happy, you're not too dumb, not too smart. You're right where you need to be. My personal understanding, middlewise is a concept that could be exercised, like any mind. That is going to get exercised and to better themselves. Middlewise is going to be that. Reading the poetic edda for the first time, you're advancing yourself and then after you read that, the knowledge is. Your knowledge library and your knowledge, um. Tank, alright, think of it as like a tank, you got zero, got zero gallons, you got fifty gallons and you got a hundred gallons. Now. At the beginning of your Havamol or at the beginning of your poetic edda reading experience, you're gonna be. Zero wise when it comes to Norse paganism, and then you read the Havamol, you're gonna be like this, well, this is your middlewise, if it's like this. If this is your total knowledge base of Norse paganism, this is your middlewise. Well, with the more reading you do, you add to the tank, you keep on adding to it, and that increases your middlewise. If that makes any sense, so in essence, if you continue learning. I mean, if you, I'm a huge believer in it, if you don't use it, you. If you don't use it, you lose it, meaning if you don't use a task, you're gonna lose the task and the skill that comes with it. So you have to continuously, um. Increasing your knowledge base, think of that as a drum, and I love this analogy, think of that as a drum with a tiny little hole at the bottom. There's, and the liquid is your knowledge. Continuously, there's knowledge gonna be leaking out, you can keep on add more water to it, so you're. Still at middle and you're not going into uh, the lowwise. And if you go into the highwise, you're um, gonna be spilling over, so, and now. Drive yourself into chaos cuz you won't be able to retain new knowledge on top of your eating old knowledge, so yeah. Doesn't really make sense to be highwise in that, uh, point. So I'm gonna count that as like stanza two and three, cuz. You gotta learn about being highwise and lowwise and you gotta learn about being middlewise, so that's stances one, two and three. Number one is stanza one twenty seven, stances two and three are gonna be stances fifty four through fifty six. So it's technically three stances, but I'm gonna count it as two, so you learn multiple different concepts during those. Just those three stances, and when it comes to the Havamol. There is a lot of things to unpack, there's a lot of things that you need to know. But this is the beginning steps, this is to help you better under. This is to better help you understand, um, Norse paganism in the eyes of a worthy leader. Which is thyself, so. What, um, so the next one is gonna be stanza forty two, so. Let's pull this up. Stances forty two. Be a friend to your friend and repay each gift with a gift, repay laughter with laughter, repay. Treachery with treachery, stand as forty two from the Havamol, so. This is a concept which is called the gifting cycle and, um. It's where present and like birthday presents come and go, there's. It's why you always want to repay kindness with kindness, it's kinda like the golden, the. Um, forgetting the, forgetting the thing, well, yeah, I'm forgetting that, um, the, uh. The golden rule, there we go, the golden rule, stanza forty two of the Havamol is kinda like the golden rule, treat others the way you wanna be treated. So stanza forty two, befriend your friend and repay each gift with a gift, repay laughter with laughter, repay treachery with treachery. Treat others how you wanna be treated, if you keep on getting treated badly, treat them badly. If they treat you good, treat them good. Now, if they give you a birthday gift, give them a birthday gift. It does not have to be a monetary value when it comes to gifting, if I buy you a fifty dollar gift. But it means the same as a fifteen hundred dollar gift. I'm going to try my damnedest to give you the fifteen hundred dollar experience, because that's all it is. Um, time is a valuable resource, uh, is not replenishable. To anyone, um, so yeah, there's. Putting time and effort is probably one of the best things that you can do for repaying for a gift. You don't want, if there's monetary value attached with it, um, as long. The main thing is as long as it, um. Gets same experience and the same emotional response, then that is that. So stanza forty two is sta, uh, the fourth stanza of. The fourth important stanza you should know wi, within the Havamol. So just again, stanza one is stanza one twenty seven, giving no peace to your enemies. By essence, so here's that, then you got stances fifty four through fifty six. Which is talking about middlewise, I'm counting those as sta, uh, stances one and two or two and three, because you're learning about being. Uh, low and mi, highwise, and then you're learning about middlewise and the importance of middlewise and the applications that can go with that. Now, the last and final stanza. That I think is most important. Uh, I need to find it. For some reason, like I have it on my head, but. It's, it's, um. It's escaping me, I, I'll know it when I see it, cuz in my head, when I was reading it. I was telling myself, well, that is, that is a stanza that I want to know and I, I, I want to have. When, when I get to this point, in my head, I knew which ones I would be talking about. Uh, there's, there's one that is just perfect. And I can't find it. You have to find it in the Jackson Crawford edition. Some reason, like, oh, alright. There it is, this is the one I wanted, very famous and it's very. Of recognized within the heathen, um. What am I trying to say, the heathen culture, so stanza seventy six, cattle die, can die. And I will die, but something that never dies are the deeds of good men. Um, in the Hollander version, you got stances seventy six, cattle die and kinsmen die. Thyself, heck, soon will die, but fair fame will fade never, I wean for him who wins it. And in the Jackson Crawford edition, you got stanza. I wanna make sure it stands at seventy six in this version, it's been a little bit since I've, um, read it. Yep, uh, seventy six, cows die, family die, you will die and. Uh, cows die, family die, you will die the same way, but a good reputation never dies. For the one who earns it well, so in essence. Being. It's truly something. Being, knowing this. You will die one day, but your reputation will. You will die one day, but your reputation will not. And when talking about reputation, it's not just purely about your word, which is a big. Defining factor when it comes to Norse pagans, it's our word is their law, it's what ties us, um. I mean, I went over it, I wanna say last week and. The discussion and last week's study session, so. Cattle die, kin die and I will die, I will die, alright, but something that never dies are the deeds of good men. So my eyes, this, what I'm doing right now, you know, me. Recording myself, talking to a camera, trying to be as educational as possible, trying to be as entertaining as possible. I know myself, I'm not the best reader, but I hope with me fumbling my words, I can help you. Entertain yourself and some points of the way. Alright, so. My videos are never gonna go away as long as the internet is still around, you know, the, the common saying of. What you posted on the internet and never goes away, I mean, that's that, so. My reputation is gonna live on through my coworkers that know me, um, it's gonna live on through my family. The type of man I am, um. So that is my last and final stanza that I think is very important. When it comes to the Havamal, it's five stanzas that are gonna help you live a better and more truthful life. So. That is that. I hope everyone enjoyed our Sunday study session. Don't forget to like, comment and subscribe for. And turn on that bell notification to get to notified when we go live. I'm streaming to multiple platforms at this time, um, so. Streaming to the path of, or Path of the Raven, Twitch channel, YouTube channel. Um, my personal Facebook account, which my friend from Handler's course. Uh, and all my other, uh, coworkers and all my other friends, they can see that, see what's going on with my life, stay up to date. I'm a little shy when it comes to that, but it's, it's important to me. So then you got. You got the new upsala Facebook account, which if you are not, um. You don't know about that, it's this right here. Right there, so you got the. W W W dot facebook dot com slash new upsala forward slash. I post a lot there, you can see we're live right there, huh, so, but anyways. This is the Facebook channel, we're going to be, the, the goal of this is to. Post more and get more involved with, uh, the community. The talk is that we are going to maybe do a podcast, it's up in the works, but that's something that. Is being discussed, more that is being discussed is. You know, I'm gonna be doing this more often, I want to do it, uh. Seven days a week, six days a week, at least two hours, I mean, that's my goal, um. Sundays are always gonna be dedicated to reading the next story within the saga. The poetic era or whatever book we're reading, Sunday study session, the triple S. The other five to six days, I plan on playing like Assassin's Creed Valhalla, which I enjoy very much. Um. That or playing other. Uh, Norse expired Viking inspired, uh, video games. Um, where I could just, you know, do some decompression for myself, cuz that's how I decompress. After work and everything, I play some games and all my stress, um, but, 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 but. That is the plan, um, I've already played Assassin's Creed Valhalla, I've played all of them, uh, so. It, there ain't gonna be no spoiling or anything like that, so that's what you can. Look forward for myself, um. Which you can look from myself. And the new upsala organization in a whole. And I hope you enjoyed this, truly, truly, I hope, I know. It's a little dull, I might be switching to the Jackson Crawford edition, I do some less stuttering. And it'll be easier for me to read cuz I'm not gonna be translating from Old English and trying to. See the new English, so I might be switching to the Jackson Crawford edition just for. Uh, easier to read and translate, so. I hope you all enjoyed and, um, so. Hope you all enjoyed. And trying to think of what else we can do. Now that we're just gonna be feeling, if there's anyone in the comments or the. The chat or anything, feel free to write it down, I'm gonna do my best to. Watch out for it and if you have any questions about Norse paganism. Or in general about paganism in general, feel free to write it in the comments and we'll go from there. Now. What, so I want to do. Get. And oh, so for the Youtubes, right, let's get on that, for the Youtubes. Uh, my goal is to edit this down, this is gonna create two videos, I mean, same as last week, but. On top of just doing a live stream and post, uh, posting the highlights. Um, for viewing, I want to. Actually record a video where I talk about like a topic, um, I think this week I want to talk about. How to be a Viking in the modern day, is it possible? I think that's gonna be the topic of discussion for my, uh, offline YouTube video, so. That is that, trying to think if there's anything else that is on my head. Cuz nothing's coming up. Nothing, nothing is all, so. Alright, we can talk about. Uh, the potential live date or lifetimes, so potentially what I'm thinking is going live. At eight to ten P U, PST every single day. Except for Sundays, that'll be one to three-ish PST. I know it's not crazy long, I mean, I have work that I'm doing on top of this, on top of. Being a family man, being a dad, um, I'm just trying to do my part to get to know you guys, get to help you guys. And better yourself each and every day. So two hours every single day on top of the potential, potential podcasts. Um, with, with the other gothar and other, um. With the other, uh, individuals that could be invited within the podcast. I know, that'll be fun, so. New upsala as a whole has been a little. A little slow when it comes to keeping you guys notified, keeping you guys informed in what we're doing. Um, the goal is trying to be as transparent as possible, um. So there's that. Not trying to. Be, um, more out of the gate, another good part is, so, nevermind, I'm not gonna talk about that. Don't wanna spoil. But yes, uh, last little tidbit of what it is to be a gothy. Being a gothy is being a religious leader to a, a pagan community and. Yeah, that's, that's what I've been doing since I've taken my oath, I've been loving it ever since, um, it's unsurreal for me, it's been. Part of my path for many years and, oh, being a religious leader has been in my view. For many years, um, the congregation side is just my way of. Trying to help, yeah. Um, but, so, two hours, gonna be streaming, two hours. Probably playing a game to decompress for my, for myself, keep you guys entertained. Could be Viking inspired for the most part, unless there's something else, um. Let me know which games you would like to watch play, cuz I have damn near like. Hundreds of games, so you don't gotta worry about that, I know for the most part, I'm gonna be like playing ball hall alone. Um, I wanna play the Blade's Sinu Sacrifice. That's gonna be coming out, um, the second one's gonna be coming out soon, uh, we could play God of War. Uh, got it on the PC, but then I can also, I don't know how I'll do it, but I'll hook up. My PS five and then we play God of War Ragnarok and do like an analysis on that and. Uh, ranking and all, you know, make some content about that, um, we got a platformer game where I could play as Avar. Platformer as like Super Smash Bros. kind of, um, got Valheim, which I've never played. Uh, but I got it and it's been on my playlist for a little bit, so. Maybe we could get like a server or something, I don't know, but yes, 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 that is. That is what's new with me and I hope you all enjoyed today's Sunday study session. Oh, another thing is we could play Yu-Gi-Oh, like, I, I'm a big Yu-Gi-Oh nerd, I play Brunick and I play Nordics. Uh, I also play Sharks, so there's that, uh, any other Yu-Gi-Oh nerds, we. And sit down, talk and, um, make some content. It like that, or just play around. Uh, ch 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 ch, any last things, any last bits? Nothing that comes to mind. I know I've been just kinda scraping for the last couple minutes, but I'm trying to get everything that I want to say out. While I'm lying, alright, so we got the Facebook, which was. W W W dot facebook dot com slash forward slash new upsala forward slash. Um, there's also the YouTube channel, which if you're watching, it's click down below. Go to the main channel, I have. Two videos up there, I've been posting some shorts and, um. I did the welcome channel video, uh, we also have a TikTok that I also have and doing. So there's that, what, what else is going on? YouTube of a TikTok that I also have and doing. So there's that, what, what else is going on, alright. Restrains being weird, well, anyways, so we got that, alrighty, 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 um. YouTube of a TikTok.
We have the new upsala Twitter page.
Also have.
Um, got my own Twitter, which is. Uh, Path of the Raven, you got Path of the Raven Twitch channel, um, well, anyways, we got that going.
That.
Uh, Path of the Raven YouTube.
Already, already.
Come on, I'm not gonna say that, oops, all the Twitter, personal Twitter.
We have the oops all the Twitter page.
Also have.
Path of the Raven.
Got my own Twitter.
And I am.
Noops on the Facebook channel.
Path of the Raven.
That's all of them.
Yeah.
Social media.
Twitch channel.
Um, every single one of them.
That going.
That.
Hurt my job.
YouTube.
Already, already.
Come on, I'm not gonna say that, oops, all the Twitter, personal Twitter.
Sorry about that, that shouldn't have been going. So that's, that's everything, that's everything I have to say for the Sunday study. Sunday study session, I will see you tomorrow, eight PM PST and we'll start with. Assassin's Creed Valhalla and we'll go from there, see y'all in the next one, hope you enjoyed. Like, comment, subscribe, turn on the bell notification in case you forget and. Let's continue walking this path together, alright. It's nice seeing you all enjoying the rest of your Sunday, bye.